Well, thank you for coming, everyone. This is our reorganization meeting. And I just want to say a couple of words. I want to thank Dr. Fitzsimons here.
Thank you.
Dr. Fitzsimons, welcome back.
By the way, I've been in touch with Rob, and I hear all the wonderful things he's doing. And I thought I moved fast. Snap.
Yeah, but you're a little bit cheaper than him. He's... It's good that we passed our budget. But I just want to say, it's been another great year. We had a great year this year. Some of the ratings came out that I didn't know about that they had. But we were rated number 34 in the state as far as the best teaching staff, which is congratulations to our staff and our district. U.S. News &amp; World Report rated us as number 56 in the top 100 in New Jersey. High schools at 1,700 in the nation. So, it's a silver medal in the nation. So, I just want to congratulate the staff and the administrators and everyone that's involved in the district for doing a great job. We have clean schools, our kids get the best education for our dollar, for your dollar, and I just want to congratulate everyone. So, that being said, I'd like to take a motion to adjourn this whole board. Move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Administrator O for the new members. Mr. Mara, Mr. Pizuta, and Mr....
Aye. Aye. Aye, Francis Pizzuto.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear the true faith and allegiance to the same?
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States and the state.
To the government established in the United States and the state.
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye.
Aye, Francis Pizzuto.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law?
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law?
For the office of the member of the Board of Education?
For the office of the member of the Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully?
Impartially?
Impartially.
And justly perform all the duties of that office?
And justly perform all the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God. Congratulations. We'll be inside. We will open the floor for nomination for the Board President. I nominate Mr. Richard Barson for president. Second?
Second.
Any other nomination? Motion to close the nomination.
Move. Second.
Let's go on the nomination. We're going to do a vote call. Mr. Canada?
Yep.
Mr. Denter?
Yep.
Ms. Jonas?
Yes.
Mr. Mara?
Yes.
Mr. Pizuta?
Yes.
Mr. Rutiiano? Mr. Sanchez?
Yes.
Ms. Jennings?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Mr. Barson, congratulations.
Thank you.
And we're opening the floor.
Yeah, everybody.
Opening the floor for nomination for Vice Board President.
I'd like to nominate John Canada for the post of Vice President. What a nice name.
Second?
Second.
Any other nomination? Motion to close the nomination.
Move.
Second?
Second.
Let's go on the nomination. Mr. Canada. Mr. Denter?
Yes.
Ms. Jonas?
Yes.
Mr. Mara?
Yes.
Mr. Pizuta?
Yes.
Mr. Rutiiano?
Yes.
Mr. Sanchez?
Yes.
Ms. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Barson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you. So, Mr. President?
Oh, thank you. Okay, I'll take a motion for approval of the minutes for March 15th, March 23rd, and the special meeting of April 19th.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any names?
Any comments on this evening's agenda?
Well, I would like to say that I mentioned earlier about Dr. Zwicki's speed at light hits. But I really think that this reorganization meeting has a lot of strengths. I think that we're involved in it. I think he's stepping into some of the real talent that's in the system. And I wholeheartedly support that. That's our, uh, the nice agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Fitzsimons. On that note, I will ask Dr. Zwicki for his superdance report.
Good evening. Why is everyone here tonight? Big dinner? Once again, it's been another great month. And I can't say enough how absolutely smitten I am with this school district and how lucky and blessed I feel to be here. I work with amazing teachers, amazing administrators. The kids are phenomenal. And we have an amazing board. And I feel so lucky to work with the Board President, who ran Fortune 500 companies and understands organizational change and organizational leadership, and is serving as a mentor to me. And I'm so blessed to also have Dr. Fitzsimons to balance things off of as well. So, I feel really good about all that. So, one of the things that Mr. Barson spoke about was where we come out in some recent rankings. Where we're in, you know, basically the top 50. Good teaching stat, I mean, the top 60, where we are in U.S. News... I'm sorry, yeah, U.S. News &amp; World Report for our ranked high school. I believe that we're only going to move up from there and that we are on a trajectory that's going to take us to, you know, the top 20, if not the top 10 in the state, and be recognized as the lighthouse district in the New York metro area. So, that being said, we, as an administrative team, as part of our entry plan, have looked at our needs as a district. And one of the things that we are committed to, and we handed this out tonight, is the model school framework for how we're going to provide instructional leadership to our teachers, professional development, how we're going to monitor teaching, and what we want for our students. And the center of that is in the student achievement. We have an administrative team that is committed to having a student-centered organization. And for that reason, also prompted by the retirement of Mr. Spinosa, which I can only just say so many amazing things to tell. Who in a short amount of time has done so many things for us. And the reason why we have the rankings we have for the high school, why we got the GAST and CAP, the general board, why we're on the AP honor roll, why we have math space next year for our blended learning curriculum, all those things are because of Mr. Spinosa. And even though he's retiring, he's not going to be gone for long. We're going to find a way to get him back here with us. That being said, that prompted us to look at, you know, what human capital do we have in the district? What are our strengths? And how we could reorganize to best meet this, our vision of a student-centered organization. And so, tonight on the agenda, you're going to see a reorganization of the administrative team as follows. Starting next year, I'm recommending that Mr. Tony Colosserado be the principal of Weehawken High School. Susie Mira, not Dorsey, as principal of Theodore Roosevelt School. Anna Wodowski Bernstein as the principal of Daniel Webster School. And I think no other position illustrates exactly how we're moving pieces of expertise to help our students. Mr. Ferlo has done an amazing job as supervisor of special education. And it's no secret that our most important area of need is 7th through 9th grade. That's where we have the most at-risk students. So, that's why we're going to have an assistant principal at the high school who's going to specialize in the 7th and 9th grade students, who has a math background and has a special education background. He's going to be our Navy SEAL who's going in there to work with those students. And that's Mr. Rob Ferro. Also at the high school, Mr. Zach Nezimento, who's our supervisor of athletics, also going to be serving as dean for 10th through 12th grade, handling positive behavior intervention sports and discipline with those students as the point person for those students. Essentially having two houses in the high school, 7th through 9th and 10th through 12th. So, I'm very happy for Mr. Nezimento. In the central office, Mr. Recchio, who's done an amazing job and put up some amazing student achievement numbers. At Theodore Roosevelt School, will be taking over the position of Director of People's Services and Personalized Learning. It's a new hybrid position common in many forward-thinking districts in which you'll be handling special education, ESL, health services, and monitoring our response to intervention program. Mr. Recchio is a data-driven person. He's a caring father, and I think he's going to bring all that to bear. I'm very happy that he'll be working in central office. Ms. Amato, who does like seven jobs, but handles all of our academic affairs, where I've updated her job description text to reflect all that she does for the district. And she'll be our PK, Director of Academic Affairs and Innovation. Mr. Callahan has long served us. He's the reason why we have all this technology, why we're able to go with Chromebooks for Park and things like that. And he'll be stepping into the district position of being District IT Officer and Chief Digital Information Officer. And lastly, but not least, well, there's no change to Vicki's job description, but Vicki's amazing, the best BA in the state. As so many superintendents tell me, they're so jealous that I have Vicki as my BA. So, and Bill Good, our supervisor of buildings and grounds, is also going to be taking over the role of emergency management. We've been doing a lot of interfacing with Weehawken Police Department, emergency preparedness, full security audit. Next year, we're adding a scholarship system where kids are going to have to swipe in when they come in. It's a two-year rollout, we're adding cameras and things like that. Mr. Good has expertise in that, and so we're expanding his role to keep our kids safe. So, this is the team. These are the folks I want to look at in the huddle as we clap and we go to the line of scrimmage. And these are the kids who are going to deliver the best product to your children. I trust them with my own children, and I expect nothing less. And I know they're going to do a great job. And I appreciate your support in this reorganization. I've had lots of positive feedback from parents the past 24 hours, and I feel really good about this. So, that's the big-ticket item on my superintendent's report. Smaller, but, you know, still very important. We basically accomplished Park in three and a half days at the high school because of our use of going to Chromebooks. And then we're going to deploy those Chromebooks, 7th through 12th, to be a one-to-one district. So, we did move at lightning speed, but that came from the entry plan of people like Mr. Callahan and Ms. Amato. Mrs. Mara coming to me and saying, what can we do? We're looking at right now having to administer Park over three weeks at the high school. Is there something we can do? So, part I love about my job is being able to say, yes. Yes, we can go ahead with Chromebooks. And then that's going to give us the blended learning platform going forward for our students. So, I feel absolutely fantastic about that. Some other things that are important. Student life, we had an amazing autism baseball tournament, both girls' baseball and softball. You guys saw the pictures on Twitter last night of the big check. $7,000 raised for an amazing park. The event was phenomenal. It was just absolutely amazing, and it's indicative of our amazing kids, the stage crew, the actors, and the community coming together. We had two packed houses, book nights, and it was just absolutely fantastic. It was great. Thank you for everyone who bothered us. The last two things. The first one, I'm very happy about, but I knew what it was going to be. We went to make sure anyway. In 2010, we volunteered to have all of our water tested by the EPA. And everything came back clean. We haven't put any lead pipes in since 2010, but we had it retested anyway. Mr. Good oversaw that we had it tested at the source, the water coming in. Nothing was detected. And then the same thing in the building. Everything is safe. We're nowhere near any of the thresholds or anything like that. And we're very happy. My own children drank the water here this morning in the closet. And I'm very happy to say that with all the headlines we have been drinking water. And then the last thing is I'm continuing to execute my entry plan for another two months. I spoke to the Daniel Webster PTA the other night. And then the next thing we're going to be doing is going to be a survey coming out. We wanted to do it earlier in the month, but we're going to wait until the end of this one about our district goals, which we need to prepare. I have to work with the board next month to do that. Our district goals are fantastic. They were developed by Dr. Fitzsimons and the board. And one of the goals is hiring a new superintendent. So, we're going to tweak those a little bit to kind of reflect the current initiatives that we have, maybe things like green schools and blended learning and things like that. So, it's going to be a survey going out to all the stakeholders with a study back on where we should keep those goals. And that's all I got tonight. That's it.
I thank Dr. Wicki. I know Dr. Wicki and Dr. Fitzsimons, who've had together a cooperative organization. And I just want to thank them and congratulations to the staff. I'll take a motion for accept superintendent's report.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
And the term's report.
All matters keen in nature.
Go after here. Thank you. Motion to accept?
Move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a request for consent agenda. Let's go.
Motion, Mr. Francis Pizzuto. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, personnel. Item A, we resolve that the Board of Education accept the resignation upon retirement of Mrs. Pizuta, who is a high school, effective July 1st, 2016, and to refer the result that the Board of Education extends to Mrs. Pizuta their appreciation for returning his service to the We hope and public school. Motion to move?
Move.
Second? All in favor? Any names?
On behalf of the board this morning. Thank you. F, Mrs. Spinosa, we have done for the district. One of the positive bands, we have the best band, anything he's ever done. We've always had, we're always number one, so congratulations. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. President, I could just say a word about Mrs. Spinosa. I know him from a very young age, his father and mother. I just feel so good that a guy like Ken and Ms. Dorsey and several other, Mr. Robert Ferro, all Weehawken people elevating themselves prominently in this district. And I've been here to see you. So, congratulations to all you and all the other people who did a wonderful job. Dr. Fitzsimons, who's a florist to me, he did an excellent job. He helped our district, so I'm grateful for that. Thank you.
Item B, we resolve that the Board of Education accept the resignation upon retirement of Mrs. Pizuta, who is a library media specialist at Theodore Roosevelt School, effective July 1st, 2016. We further resolve that the Board of Education extend to Mrs. Pizuta their appreciation for 21 years of service to the We hope and public school.
Move.
Second? Mr. Sanchez? All in favor?
Yes.
Any names? Item C, we resolve that the Board of Education accept the resignation upon retirement of Mrs. Judy Roberts, who is a library specialist at Theodore Roosevelt School, effective July 1st, 2016, and we further resolve that the Board of Education extend to Mrs. Roberts their appreciation for 21 years of service to the We hope and public school. Second? All in favor?
Yes.
Any names? Item D, we resolve that the Board of Education accept the resignation upon retirement of Mrs. Robert Perez, physical education teacher, at Theodore Roosevelt School, effective July 1st, 2016, and we further resolve that the Board of Education extend to Mrs. Perez their appreciation for his 34 years of service to the We hope and public school.
Move.
Motion? All in favor? Any names? Item E, we resolve that the Board of Education accept the resignation upon retirement of Mrs. Pizuta, who is a library media specialist at Daniel Webster School, effective July 1st, 2016, and we further resolve that the Board of Education extend to Mrs. Pizuta their appreciation for her 31 years of service to the We hope and public school. Motion? Second? Favor?
Aye.
Item F, item F is to approve the looking for Mrs. Callahan. Motion? Mr. Sanchez? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any names? Item G, item G, we resolve that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the brand uses, run the ICAU, a triary lead. Motion?
Move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Any names? Item H, item H, we resolve that Mrs. Callahan Miro has been on a leave of absence and will be returning for her teaching duty for the 16th, 17th school year with the following in her step and salary. Motion to move? All in favor? Any names? Item I, item I is to approve the return of Mrs. Ojama to the following step and salary. Motion? Second? All in favor? Any names? Item J, item J is to approve the return of Ms. Versa for 16th, 17th at the following step and salary.
Move.
Second?
Second.
Also, all in favor? Any names? Okay, K, K also is to approve the return of Mrs. DePascal at the following step and salary for 16th, 17th school year. Motion to move? Mr. Pizuta?
Aye.
Mr. Sanchez, second. Thank you. All in favor? Any names? Item L, item L is to approve the following degree individual as substitute teacher in the way of 85 pounds and the submission of prudential and criminal background check. Motion?
Move.
All in favor? Any names? Item N, item N, we resolve that the Board of Education accept the resignation of the superintendent of schools to a famous, we in a long war, as a English subject.
Move.
All in favor? Any names? Item N, item N, we resolve that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Mrs. Iroko Lonko, a student effective April 28th. Move. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item O, item O, we resolve that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to transfer Mr. Anthony Carl Serto to We hope and High School principal from principal of Daniel Webster School, effective July 1st, to the salary of $1,000.
Second.
Second, Pizuta. All in favor? Any names? Item P, item P, we resolve that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to transfer Mrs. Recchio to the People's Services and Personalized Learning from principal of Theodore Roosevelt School, effective July 1st.
Move. Second.
All in favor? Any names? Item Q, item Q, we resolve that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to transfer Mrs. Suzanne Mara to principal of Theodore Roosevelt School from assistant principal at the high school, effective July 1st.
Move.
All in favor? Any names?
I'm staying.
Oh, sorry. Okay, item R.
There is no R.
We resolve that, item S, we resolve that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to transfer Robert Provo to assistant principal and Dean of Students, 7th and 8th, 7th to 9th grade for We hope and, We hope and High School. From Supervisor of Special Education.
Move. Second.
All in favor? Any names? Item T, item T is, we resolve that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to transfer Mrs. Anna Wodowski to principal of Daniel Webster School from Supervisor of Elementary Education.
Move. Second.
All in favor? Any names? U. Item U, we resolve that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to transfer Brice Sama to PK, to our Director of Academic Affairs and Innovation, from Director of Academic Affairs, effective July 1st, 2016.
Move. Second.
All in favor? Any names? Item B, we resolve that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to transfer Mr. Zachary Natale to Director of Athletics and Dean of Students, grades 10 to 12, from Supervisor of Athletics.
Move.
Okay, correction. Correction, we resolve that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to transfer Mr. Zachary Natale to Director of Athletics and Dean of Students, grades 10 to 12, from Supervisor of Athletics.
Supervisor and supervisor again, I apologize.
So, both.
Next, now Supervisor of Athletics and Dean of Students, 10 to 12, from Supervisor of Athletics.
So, both supervisors. Okay, motion to?
I move.
All in favor? Any names? Item W, we resolve that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to authorize also by teachers of... superintendent of schools to authorize all certified by staff as eligible to participate in curriculum mapping between May 1st and June 30, 2016? The rate of pay will be at the rate of $35,000 per hour as per the Weehawken Education Association collective bargaining agreement. This curriculum mapping work is funded via Title III. Motion to move?
Second.
Mr. Denter? All in favor? Any name? Okay, moving to the addenda. Item X, do you resolve that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint or hiring of the following individual as the teacher of the Weehawken Public School from September 1st, 2016 through June 30, 2017? It's for Paul Benham and Diana Corra. Move. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any name? Y. Item Y, do you resolve that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Sarah Threatt as a teacher 8 assigned to Daniel Webster School, staff 3, 8, 18, 18, 2, for wearing tradition affecting May 1st, 2016?
Move.
Second? Second, Ms. Jonas. All in favor?
Yes.
Any name? Item Z. Do you resolve that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Grant Alig as district IT and digital information officer, 12-month position effective July 1st, 2016?
Move.
Move, Mr. Denter, second, Mr. Denter? All in favor?
Aye.
Any name? Item, next one is AA. Do you resolve that, or not AA, item, yeah. Do you resolve that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to transfer William Gunn to supervisor of buildings and grounds and emergency management from maintenance supervisor effective July 1st, 2016?
Move.
Ms. Jonas? Second, Mr. Sanchez? All in favor?
Aye.
There's another addition, amendment, or addenda, is, uh, this is AA. AA is, do you resolve that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint or hiring of the following individual as the teacher of the mass at the Weehawken High School? Move. Move, Mr. Jennings? Second?
Second.
Mr. Denter? All in favor? Any name? Thank you. Personnel item.
Thank you, Vicki. I think that's the most Vicki ever spoken in the whole year. But I just want to say, I want to congratulate all the retirees. And we just hired some fantastic personnel. And people must really want to work in Weehawken. One's from Pennsylvania, one is from Hamilton, New Jersey. And it's an hour ride, one or two-hour ride, some of them. So, but they're great candidates, and I just want to congratulate them and hopefully all of them at your feet at home. Thank you very much.
Any comments from...
First of all, I'd like to thank the Board of Education for 30 years, a great 30 years of service from me to you. I want to also thank the township council, the mayor, and especially the community for allowing me to be involved and teach the children of this community. I thank you for all your support. I thank you for all your best wishes. And I would have never lived my life a different way. So, um, excuse me. Thank you. Being in Weehawken, growing up here, as Frank said, for 27 years, and then teaching here for another 30, has been a tremendous part of my life, and my family and I. Thank you all for allowing me to do so. And I will always remember Weehawken, and I will always be fond of the memories and the accomplishments that we've had here. And I want to thank you all, once again, from the bottom of my heart, to all of you. To my, um... To my fellow administrators, thank you so much for being so close to me, not only as far as business in the school is concerned, but as friends. And I will treasure your friendship and your, and being a colleague of ours forever. And to all my teachers and the teachers of the district who I've known, and I've known a lot of their children, thank you very much for everything. Thank you very much. And I have to especially thank Dr. Simons and especially Dr. Zouicki for giving me this opportunity for transition and made it very seamless. So, thank you, thank you very much. And it's been a tremendous, it's been a tremendous ride here for over 30 years. So, I thank you.
Well, now, you don't owe the Steve, it's 57. I figured it out. I just wanted to find out some details. Any other comment? Okay, well, thank you very much for coming. I'll take a motion to adjourn. Move. That was quick.
All in favor?
Thanks very much, everybody.